Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So this is really sort of a broken in on your agenda three parts, but it's really one conversation with three distinct chapters. So today really marks the beginning of your kickoff of your FY23 budget process. I'm going to begin the lineup here with Mr. Bloomfield from the real estate assessor's office. But you know, we do want to make sure that there's some separation in these topics here today because as Mr. Bloomfield will be very quick to point out, he is not the tax man. He is the real estate assessor. He's done a fantastic job since he's come over. We're very lucky to have him and he's certainly inherited a challenging market and I think this him and his staff have done a fantastic job. So he's going to come up and just, I think, given the interest in this topic, give you all a little bit of background in terms of the main trends that they encountered for the revaluation activity that set your values for January 1st of 2022. But he is not going to talk about revenue. We'll have Mr. Durkin and Mr. Hill come forward and sort of the middle chapter of this story and walk you through the economic backdrop and then ultimately what the revenue side of the county budget looks like at this point and what we expect to be presented to you on March the 9th from a revenue perspective. And then finally, we will go through the CIP and really focus deeply on the referendum as we formally present that recommendation to you today. So three distinct parts of your story, but now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bloomfield to walk you through real estate.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Casey. As Matt has said, I'm standing back a little bit. As Matt has said, I'm not the tax assessor. I am the real estate assessor. So and I make that distinction only because there's always a some level of dichotomy into what in terms of what we do, in terms of what I do all the time. And interesting enough, we talked about it from the 5:00 news this morning, there was a segment, the first half of the segment talked about real estate assessments skyrocketing out of the roof. The second half, the second hour, they talked about the increase. If you've read it, home prices skyrocketed last year. Two regions saw the biggest increases. And the article goes, "Home Prices Rose 18.8% in 2001." According to S.P. K. Schuler Report, "All Regions Saw Price Gains Last Year, But Increases Were Strongest in the South and the Southeast, Each of Which Were Up Over 25%." Now, I mentioned that because it's always been a misunderstanding as to the direction of real estate versus the real estate market itself, real estate assessments versus real estate markets. And we know that there is a strong correlation into what that happens and sometimes we get confused. So I'm coming today to just give you some summary information on land book creation. Talked about this a little bit earlier. I've met with you folks through our team earlier a few weeks ago prior to the notices of going out. And just wanted to start by talking about first thing that drives our assessment activity is the state statute, this is 58.13201, which simply states that all assessments shall be probably shall be assessed at 100% of this fair market value. And that fair market value is insistent about us making it equitable across that whole strata for properties, population of properties. The total taxable assessment land book, as it stands right now, is $50 billion point two right now with it being structured in terms of residential agricultural making up $39 billion of that amount and the other commercial is about $11 billion with the overall increase from the '21 to '22 assessment, about $6.2 billion increase from last year, which is significant and I understand that. That equals the total taxable amount equals about 14.255% overall for everything combined. And that means new construction, refound and everything else that's included in that. And that breakdown in percentage wise is 10% for residential and 4% for commercial. The residential revaluation as has been reported is at 12% overall and the commercial revaluation changed to 17.45%. So that increase in land book, that $6.2 billion increase breaks down as more formally into the new construction and growth at about 8% of that amount. And the attributed to the revaluation is 90, 92% of the $6.2 billion increase. And the increase from just residential agricultural of the $6.2 billion is a 71% to 29% split between the two private classes. The qualified residential sales for 2021 has increased as you see the last five years. The 8,000 sales, and I might have missed something earlier, but in that first slide, that was the actual assessment to sell ratio. The assessment sell ratio right now is as it stands for this year is at 96.05, I believe it is, which is within the standards of IDW standards as well as the COD, the core of some dispersion, which is dispersion of the data around the population to making certain that there's some equitableness in the assessment as we apply that. That qualified residential sales as it stands would be in terms of the assessment to sell ratio would be if you take the '21 assessment, certified assessment divided by the sell price would get you a ratio and which is should be at 100%, but there's no way to achieve 100%. There's always a sliding scale, but the median is about 96% as it stands now, starting out for '21, it was at 85. This is a distribution chart of the residential property since that makes up the majority and which is where you have the majority of your conversations about residential. And this will show is showing is that the majority of the percentage of increases is between 5 and 19% is where the bulk of the property increases occurred overall, all properties across the whole county. The median sale price, taking those 8,000 sales that occurred for residential would be at $320, $325,000, it was a 10% increase from 2020. These are some notable commercial new construction builds that has happened in D.C. districts. We have one that lives in an apartment flash at $34 million in assessment, Watkins Center Apartments at 16.3 million, Austin Woods, which is up the street here at 11, $12 million there and so forth and so on. And even the distribution warehouse at 9%. So we have those new construction that came on board in 2021, I mean 2021, sorry. In that commercial asset group, apartments is leading the way, which is not surprising because that's what's happening across the country, it's happening across this district, across the region right now. Apartments, warehousing, of course, distribution warehousing has picked up over the last decade or so. Warehousing has was gone by the wayside. Last couple of years, the need for distribution, the change in how we behave, how we buy and sell products is needed for more warehousing is needed. As you've seen here in the county, there's been a growth in warehousing distribution sites. So that is up, that assessment base is up 1.3 billion now. Other industrial increases, 728 million for industrials, many warehouses at 359 million, convenience stores, mobile home parks, interesting enough, has been an attractive asset group as well, which falls into the affordability category, which folks are trying to now target to try to at least hone in on some affordability. I don't know how they're going to, you know, increase that to make it more attractive for them in terms of investment, but that's what they have begun to invest in. And there's been a lot of outside investment pouring into the central Virginia area over the last three years, actually. There was no increase on office retail and shopping centers this year. There was a decrease from 19 to 20 and we show no real interest at this point and not certain as to what direction that those asset class is going to move into because of where we at right now. There may, we have not seen any people downgrade in terms of size of office space at this moment, but there hasn't been any interest to really go into really investing heavily into office retail and your shopping since at this point. And this last slide is just talking about the apartment sector and some of you have known noted across the county here, the last month of December, there were three or four notable apartment increase sales and one was the Chesterfield Apartment Complex below the bar, paid $67 million for it. That was in Chester. Left Co. buys 716 units, $406 million. Venture into Boulders apartment deal for $71.5 million. So that asset class has been heavily invested in and will continue to be heavily invested as you also have, there is also, I think there is a project going on in Mrs. Haley's Nigga Woods up there, 500 unit apartment complex is being added to your district as well. But that $3.4 billion increase from last year, if you look at the red line, which is the revout and the new and the combined, at 1.2 added to what was the $2.1 billion last year, got us to the $3.4 billion total for that asset class. So that's what's leading the way in commercial for right now. As it is right now, I don't see any change in that behavior. There is a change as if we had to read the tea leaves as to what may occur moving forward. We've seen mortgage rates increase over the last two weeks or so. Feds are talking about another, you know, 50 basis points, 100 basis point increase. So that may have a impact on at least the growth of overall home prices may begin to at least level off. I don't think it's going to hurt demand for properties, but it will put a challenge in, it will put a challenge on sellers to start to come down or at least be more competitive with their pricing because it gives buyers some leverage back to buyers in terms of what they look, because if you think about if I can't, if I've added another $3, $400 on to my payment for what I was looking for, then that may help incentivize sellers to start to elicit, to start to probably to at least to move the pricing at least to a level that is more able to be able to, you know, for folks to be able to get into that asset class. And that ends this, my part of this presentation. Any questions about anything?
Questions for our assessor?
No questions.
I found it noteworthy, Mr. Bloomfield. I mean, you look at retail and office and no change and, you know, we've kind of had an eyeball in this county for a little while and I think a more focused one recently on old shopping centers, retail, office space, what's going on with that sector and, you know, in terms of redeveloping some of those older spaces, you know, it still looks like it's an opportunity for the county to get highest and best use in some of these areas. So we appreciate you and we appreciate this very, very, very good report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Mr. Chair, Dr. Casey. So we just heard from Mr. Bloomfield about countywide assessments here in Chesterfield County. I'm going to give you guys a little update on the economic situation going on, not only here in Chesterfield County, but around the nation as well, as well as a revenue update that basically serves as our framework for the upcoming FY23 budget. So as you just heard, again, countywide assessments are strong here in Chesterfield County, but what I want to give you guys a quick glimpse of today is that it's not just a Chesterfield County issue going on with rising real estate assessments and values. Just a quick little glimpse of this, this is Zillow data. You may have seen this before. I know Mr. Harris has presented it to you all as well, but just updated information with Januaries, this basically is looking at the single value, or excuse me, single family home value estimates here within Chesterfield County as well as our surrounding localities and the Richmond region. Main point from this chart is that Chesterfield is not alone. They are seeing those increasing trends, not just here in Chesterfield, but like I said, around the region as well. So again, nationwide, the Case Schiller Index came out yesterday, which is essentially the measure of home values nationwide, that home values across the nation have gone up 18% just in 2021 alone. So again, some of the biggest increases that was noted were here in the South and Southeast regions of the U.S., which was the biggest increase in 34 years. So again, just wanted to make that point real quick with our real estate market, that Chesterfield is not an outlier. So again, while real estate is our biggest chunk of our revenue sources, we do continue to see growth in our consumer spending within the county, more specifically with our local sales tax collections. So over the past year and a half, the county has seen that substantial growth in local sales tax collections, outpacing its pre-pandemic five-year average of 4%, represented by that purple line near the bottom of the graph. With the rate, excuse me, with the latest release of December's collections, Chesterfield actually saw a historic high for collections in December of $7.3 million. You normally see that in December with holiday sales with the last historic high being in December of 2020. Inflation does kind of take an aspect on that when we adjust for that, it actually brings that year-over-year growth closer to 4.5%, which is more in line with that pre-pandemic trend that we've seen. Some of the biggest increases that we've seen with local sales tax collections are restaurants, so we're starting to see those make a comeback. Durable goods, so home furnishings, home improvement stores, things of that nature have been making a comeback as well. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the tourism industry here in Chesterfield County. With the latest data from January 2022 on occupancy rates, we see that Chesterfield not only is outpacing its pre-pandemic highs from 2020 and 2021, but is also leading the region against our biggest competitors, Henrico and Richmond City as well. As you all have heard before from the Richmond region tourism, most of this tourism is driven by our River City Sports Plex. Just to recap from previous presentations that they've done, River City has generated in FY21, $32.2 million in economic impact, which resulted in about $1.2 million in direct tax revenue. Because of River City, we do see those increase in visitors to our county, about 130,000 visitors and 50 gains or tournaments played at River City alone. In the coming CIP slides that Mr. Harris will present to you all here in a little bit, you will continue to see that investment in River City as our asset for sports tourism here in the county. So something we don't normally talk about, but is worth mentioning is recordation tax collections. Recordation tax collections are what the county collects when you record a home sale or refinancing deed. So we get data from that from the Chesterfield Circuit Court Clerk. And basically, the graph before you see today is the number of refinancing deeds that have been done since January of 2017. So again, kind of giving you that five to six year period of refinancing. As we all know, with the housing market over the last year and a half, we did see that boom. Chesterfield's tax collection totals for FY21 were 11, approximately $11 million, which was up 43% from FY20. As you can see, and just sorry, as a quick reference, recordation tax generally brings in about $6 to $7 million a year. So again, we saw that big increase with the housing market. More so from this chart, you can see that basically when mortgage rates started to hit record lows, we saw that increasing trend in refinancing deeds here within Chesterfield County. So while we do expect with the most recent trend, excuse me, of mortgage rates going back up, as Mr. Bloomfield just mentioned earlier, cresting over 4% recently, we are expected to see this revenue source start to come back down toward its more pre-pandemic Another revenue source that we're going to talk about is our investment portfolio for the investment earnings here within the county. As a result of the Treasury and her team's strategy, year-to-date investments, earnings that you can see on the bar chart in front of you continually posted strong gains since FY2017 up until about FY20. However, digging into that portfolio, we did see that some of our majority of our longer-term investments, which is primarily corporate bonds that we invest in, about 53% of our portfolios, corporate bonds have already begun to roll off and you can kind of see that starting in FY21 and FY22. Due to the timing of these maturities and the nature of the market, we don't see that reinvestment at its original rate happening likely. It will be a little more difficult to reinvest at those previously higher yields. So again, with other revenue source, we are starting to see not a significant decline, but again, a more level off towards the earlier years before FY20. And just as a side note, the current yield benchmarking that you do see there, while we do expect this to decline a little bit, Chesterfield's current portfolio does outperform that of the 91-day T bill, the six-month T bill, as well as the Virginia Treasury prime liquidity. So again, we are outperforming those benchmarks around the nation and the state. So while some of our revenue sources have shown growth over the past year and a half, we are cognizant of the economic impacts at both not only the state and national level, but the global level as well. I think it's safe to say that if you're watching the news or listening to the radio, I think you don't, can't go a day without hearing about inflation, which is a very important topic, not only just for us, but the budget as well. The latest release from January had CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, at 7.5% year-over-year growth. Core CPI, which tends to be less volatile, represented by that dark purple line, it strips out food and energy. So while again, you see that pre-pandemic and prior year since 2000, it kind of stays below that 3% year-over-year mark, we've seen in recent months it jump up to over 6%. Some of the biggest jumps that have been happening with the Consumer Price Index have been gas and oil prices, used cars and trucks, as well as grocery store staples such as meats, poultry, fish and eggs. So again, we are feeling that everywhere, consumers across the nation are feeling that rampant inflation continue. There is hopefully good news on the horizon with the Federal Reserve interest rate hikes that will hopefully ease this inflation to a more normalized level. And on the March 9th meeting, you actually hear from Stephanie Brown, our procurement director, the impact of inflation on our goods and services here with Chesterfield One of the impacts of the inflation pressures going on around the country is the increase in labor costs. So widely used as an indication of the cost of labor is the employment cost index. So looking at this nationwide with the latest data, you can see that labor costs have increased 4% compared to quarter four of 2020. Again, you can see on this graph, it kind of tends to follow the same trend as core CPI, but it has consistently posted year-over-year growth since the inception of the survey, with the highest reading being the highest year-over-year growth in 20 years, as you can see. As Dr. Casey mentioned yesterday during the media briefing with the upcoming proposed budget, you will see a continued investment in our workforce with over two-thirds of our budget being related to personnel costs. And then just digging a little deeper into that wage growth, we do start to see the wages being impacted by inflation. So before you is real average hourly earnings, which takes into account inflation. As you can see, it started to decrease over the past year and a half, indicating that inflation has started to primarily outpace wage growth. And I know there's been reports out there and it's worth mentioning that nationwide, they estimate that consumers are spending about an extra 7, $200, excuse me, $275 per month due to inflation. So again, we are cognizant of all these issues, not only on the revenue side, but the expenditure side as well. So inflation, wage growth, all of this goes into the Consumer Sentiment Index, which is an index that the University of Michigan puts out, basically looking at the impact of the economy on consumers. February's consumer, excuse me, February's Consumer Sentiment Index fell to 61.7, which is a 19.7% decrease from the prior year. It also represents a 20-year drop in the index relating back to 2011 levels. Again, like I just said, consumers nationwide continue to be concerned about rampant inflation and falling real income levels. Further confidence in government economic policies were at its lowest since 2014 and the increasing geopolitical risks are contributing to the downfall of consumer confidence. Part of the Consumer Sentiment Survey actually asks consumers on their outlooks for buying durable goods, so there's more big ticket items such as home appliances, lawn mowers, things of that nature. And as we saw earlier with our sales tax graph, part of that drive of our local sales tax more recently has been because of durable goods. So the graph before you, the top part is essentially asking consumers how they feel the buying conditions are for large household durables. And as you can see with February's, it's reached a historic low. The bottom chart asks consumers on their buying conditions for household durables due to price. So we see that increase as more consumers are not feeling obligated to buy those bigger ticket items because prices are increasing. And then lastly, just as a quick mention, at the state level, there are some uncertainties in our state revenues. Ms. Spillman, I believe, is giving an update for you all tonight about the General Assembly, but just wanted to hit on a couple of these real quick as it relates to local revenue collections from the state. Grocery tax, I know there's been proposed adjustments or elimination for the 2.5% grocery tax. While some of these, as on the slide as well, I mentioned, have died or have gone through, excuse me, continue to look to go through, we are cognizant of the impact of these on our local revenues. The referendum, which is a big one for us at the local level, would propose a referendum requirement to increase most property taxes instead of just a public hearing. The BPole Tax proposes the elimination of the Business Professional Occupational License Tax, which is about $20 million for our local revenue. And then lastly, the recordation tax, which would actually be positive, would be the restoration of distributing state recordation tax to localities. So again, while this isn't the exhaustive list of everything going on in the General Assembly, we are aware of what's going on, capital to our revenues in the coming years. With that, before I pass it to Mr. Durkin, any questions?
Questions, board members? Thank you for that depressing summary. Appreciate you.
Sorry, I couldn't make it more impressive.
Well, one good thing about, Mr. Chairman, I might add, is that with increasing wages, we have more disposable income.
Correct.
The only question is what are our saving rates? Are we saving more money or are we spending it back in the economy? Because our economy requires at least 66% is consumer-related and then the others corporate. But consumers really drive the economy, so that's the good, that's the good side. We have more money, more dollars. We hope we can just control inflation. As you pointed out, the rate increase, which I think will come next month, should help with that, dampen that inflation pressure. But thank you for the information. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Casey. You've heard a lot of information this afternoon and it's my job to kind of take that, synthesize it, and how does that impact what we are proposing for our fiscal '23 budget? The slide before you states that, you know, our revaluations this year are the highest they've been since 2017, but there are a couple of things I do want to point out in this chart. One is that the fundamentals of the market are not the same as they were 10-plus years ago when we had the subprime crisis. This time, as you've heard from multiple media outlets, including our Richmond Realtors Association, is really a supply and demand issue, but the financial underpinnings of it are strong. We are expecting that market for our out-year forecast to normalize, not decrease. We've got it budgeted as a back to our normal 3% to 4% range over the five-year horizon. Second part is that you see from about 2014 onwards, we're in that kind of 3% to 4%, you know, cost of doing business, as we call it, revaluation rate. That rate kind of steady state allows us to fund our operations and some enhancements. This year with the 11.9%, we are cognizant that that is higher than usual. With that, if it goes above that steady state, one of the very first things we look at is the tax rate and what we can do to alleviate the financial burden on our residents in the community. This shows you a chart from 1997 with our real estate tax rate. This is the lowest, we went back to the late 60s, I believe, a few weeks ago. This is the lowest that we've ever had on record. But one thing I will point out is that when we had a similar rise in assessments in the 2008 era with the 10.9%, we took the rate from 97 to 95. As you're all aware, the action you've already taken is to set the maximum tax rate at 93 cents, a two-cent drop. With the revales coming in a little bit stronger than that 10.9% in the past, we are proposing to reduce it by another penny to 92 cents. So there is a historical precedent for us having to propose the rate that's before you on March 9th. So this is a kind of synopsis of, you know, not just the real estate, but other things that are on the table as well as actions that you've already taken that come into effect of this calendar year. As I said, the real estate rate is proposed to go down to 92 cents. The vehicle registration fee, we are proposing that to go from $40 to $20. The vehicle registration fee, we are proposing that to go from $40 to 20. And Mr. Harris will talk more about that in terms of how that impacts the CIP. But also just to put it out there for everyone in the community as a reminder, you know, this is part of a wide-ranging tax relief program that you've all put in place with the last budget that's coming to effect this calendar year. And the first is the tax relief for the elderly and disabled. Again, to come back to that inflationary point, the Social Security Administration adjusted their cost of living by just about 6%. You all amended our tax brackets for the first time in over a decade to reflect that, providing some financial assistance to our low-income and elderly disabled citizens. Personal property, we adjusted the threshold on our PPTRA from $1,000 to $1,500, the first such adjustment since 1998. That will alleviate that bill for an additional $14,300 vehicles within the community. And then lastly, the B-Pole, we raised the exemption from $300,000 to $400,000. That now means that 2/3 of businesses located within the county are exempt from this tax, as well as it gives the additional businesses that do pay this tax an additional $100,000 tax break. And then this is kind of one of the two internal metrics that we track. We look at every year, you know, the core CPI, that strips out the food and energy inflation, looking at those core costs, and then also our population year-over-year growth. And we look at that against our revaluation rates, almost like a cost of doing business model. And the simple takeaway from this chart is you don't want that line to go way above what the population and core CPI changes have been in that particular year. As you can see, with the residential revow rate at 11.9, that did go a little bit higher than what we would typically anticipate. However, with the 92 cents that's before you, as well as the vehicle registration fee, which is in effect another penny and a half cut on the real estate rate, that brings it right back in line to that 7.5% that we are seeing. So we are seeing, you know, the cost of doing business for us going up, as you will hear from Ms. Brown on March 9, but also to take into account the fact that, you know, with our population increases, our service demand levels increase as well. But long story short, we have brought that rate back down with those two, it brings it right back in line with one of our models. Then secondly, one of the other ones we look at is the inflation-adjusted per capita spending. So when you strip out the inflationary effects, what's the real cost of running the government? And so we looked at a post-recession average, it's coming in about $2,200 per capita. As you can see, from kind of late 90s till about 2010 era, that was elevated above what we would expect. We've worked diligently to bring that down over the years. And with the inflationary pressures that we have going into this budget cycle, the 2023 number is pretty much right in line with that post-recession average. Mr. Hayes will be before you on March 9.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Haley.
Can we back up and look at that again?
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just absorbing this because I think this is pretty, is really good information. I think it tells a story to our citizens. I'm looking at my good friend, Mr. Holland, who's agreeing with me, correct, that, I mean, this, the ability to be able to say with an inflation-adjusted per capita spending is a story, right? I mean, this really tells us.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, if you look at the chart, we are approximately back to about 1992 levels, give or take, once you strip out the effects of inflation in terms of the real cost of running the government.
Can I open Pandora's box?
Yes.
Can we get this from schools?
That's a good point. Yeah, go ahead to speak to it.
We haven't.
I mean, I, I think it would be.
Mm-hmm. Inflation-adjusted per capita spending.
I would like to see something equivalent from schools as we have those difficult conversations each year, both in trying to, you know, just look at just information, just like this, so that we're looking at folks with accountability to our citizens, with absolute recognition that we want to make sure that we're funding appropriately, whether it be county departments or, you know, that we still consider them in that category. And so looking for that, this information, I'm assuming, does not include school spending. Would I be correct?
It includes our transfer to them, but does not include their overall spending, no.
Right. So I think that's a worthy ask.
Dr. Casey.
As if I can interject, Mrs. Haley, I think what, what we need to do is have a consistent format of defining the formulas by which the chart is created. I mean, the schools, you know, in somewhat of their defense, there's statewide metrics and manners of how they have to report out in student costs per capita or a cost per student enrollment, that they not include what I would call it in my accounting profession, you know, all the costs that are really taxpayer-funded. You know, there's debt service, there's capital, you take year-end surpluses, you amend budgets that lend to those costs, so it's not in the beginning budget, if you will, when you've done amendments during the year. Our collaborative services, which is admired by many, are in many cases given to them gratis. But, but again, it's really reflected on our side of the equation and these blue bars are costs. But therefore, again, if it's something we're doing on behalf of the school system, we should agree upon that formula. And what I suggest is, I think both of us need to come before, let's say, a school liaison committee together and hear the school and show what the schools do in far as what their state reporting requirements is for that round peg, round hole, but also for us then to present to the public how we spend the taxpayers' dollars in these types of bar charts. And we can stack these bar charts, county and school, if you will, so that, again, we are as transparent as possible. But the bottom line, you're, you're accurate and we're very mindful of it. You know, we don't, we don't laser focus on it. It is a byproduct, though, of being judicious with the monies, is that there's an inflationary aspect to who we are and there's, there's serving a growth need to who we are, and we really don't need to do much more than either of those two variables together.
Thank you for that. I mean, I do think we, we've got to look at the model that's going to reflect all of those, those different dynamics, but I do think there's something to be said about us seeing in real, live data like this and in charts. I mean, I think this speaks a message very clearly about what we're doing on the county side and some kind of, some kind of similarity from the school side, I think, would be much appreciated and much needed. And I think from the school liaison, and I don't want to speak for my colleague, Mr. Engel, but I know we've been very much aligned on these issues as we always enter these difficult conversations, and this whole board does. I think that this is exactly what we're asking for. So I will rely, I think we will all rely upon you and Mr. Harris and your teams to have these conversations with schools and come up with what an appropriate ability to convey the information looks like.
Mr. Holland?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you, Ms. Haley, for commenting there because you're absolutely right. It's important that we look at spending per capita, population and students as well, and we look at both and compare them. And you're absolutely right, as I see it, back to 1992 levels is where we are in inflation-adjusted capital spending per person. And if you look at it, spending has been really controlled quite well from 2010, actually 2011, specifically 2011, when I recall, we cut our county budget almost $50 million in 2011, right out of the Great Recession from 2009, 10, and 11. I think we cut it in 10 and we cut the tax rate by 2 cents in 2008, the year I served on the board. So you're absolutely right. And this is important that we monitor spending, not only county side, but school side as well, so that we're getting the very best from each dollar we spend and that we can account for it. So thank you for pointing that out, and I just want to comment on that. And one last question, you mentioned earlier, could you reiterate that the drop in the registration fee is equivalent to 1.5 penny?
Approximately 1.5 cent on the real estate.
On the tax rate, 1.5 penny. Yes, I want to confirm your saying.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hayes will be before you on March 9 to talk about this in more detail, but the short is there are some adjustments to the water and sewer rates, but below the inflationary rate, and the average bill will see an approximate 2.6% increase. Then finally, just a general fund summary, I won't walk through every single line that you see here before you, but the primary drivers of our revenue growth this year are our real estate rate, personal property taxes, you're all aware, especially the used car market with the chip shortages over the last 18 months, that has continued. We are seeing that reflected in our assessed values for our vehicles. The use of reserves you're seeing there is really a kind of one-time draw to go into our capital improvement program. There are a couple of large expenditures that Mr. Harris will touch on in the CIP presentation that has been funded with those use of reserves. As Mr. Hill pointed out, our local economy in terms of the sales tax is strong, we're seeing that reflected in our numbers year-to-date, and we're anticipating that in our fiscal year '23 budget. Then lastly, just to talk about the vehicle registration fee again, you will see that reduction reflected in that very last line compared to our fiscal year '22 budget. And then on March 9, we have the rollout of our work session. We then, as we do every year, have our community meetings, Facebook Live for all five districts. On March 23, we will have the public hearings on the budget with the budget adopted on April 6. And with that, happy to take any questions or pass it to Mr. Harris.
Any other questions, Mr. Carroll?
Mr. Chair, there seems to be a mix-up on that slide. I thought mine was going to be on March 22, but it shows commuter district. So we need to nail that one day.
I think there was some adjustment, but I'll follow up with you on those.
Okay.
Mr. Holland?
I'm trying to think, do we have another meeting between now and March 10? Because I need to make sure we announce it at our rec, we do have another meeting. Budget, okay, budget work session. I just want to make sure we have another time so we can announce the location and time of it so that as many citizens would like to know. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.